I will call to order the Monday, October 27th meeting of the Verona Common Council. And if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, if you would please.
Alderson Diaz.
Here.
Alderson Doyle.
Here.
Alderson Linder.
Here.
Alderson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderson Ricky.
Here.
Alderson Steiner.
Here.
Alderson Touche.
Present.
And Alderson yours.
Here.
We have a quorum. Everyone is here this evening, so thank you for that. We will move then on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. So if there's anyone that wishes to speak, you don't necessarily have to speak in the order that you signed up, but anyone that wishes to speak, you may have the podium.
Who would like to speak?
Welcome.
My name is Marcia Kacheta.
Marcia, is that microphone on? The green button should be let out.
My name.
There you go.
Is Marcia Kacheta. I've lived in the city of Verona for the last 28 years. Tonight, I would like to ask you to support a resolution to support Verona Area Needs Network. The Verona Area Needs Network has operated a food pantry here in Verona for the last 28 years. We service the Verona area school district, which includes the city of Pittsburgh, the town of Verona, and the city of Verona. Our mission is to ensure the availability of healthy food to those experiencing food hardships. Most of the households we serve are the working poor. The rest of our clients are people with disabilities, senior citizens, and folks that have simply fallen on hard times and are currently unemployed. Almost half of the people we serve are children. Providing free food allows these families to reallocate their limited resources to other essential expenses, like housing, transportation, utilities, and healthcare. A couple other people from the Verona Area Needs Network are going to tell you about the problem that we're facing right now and the solution that we would like. Thank you.
Marcia, can I just ask you one question? And I don't want to put you on the spot. And if it's not you, someone else.
Yeah.
Do you want to talk a little bit about your friend raiser on November 6th?
I would love to. This summer, we applied for a grant from Dane County and received $100,000 in an economic development grant. And that $100,000 is going to be used to help us get into a new facility. In September, Dane County issued an RFP for the lease of the old administration building at the Badger Prairie complex. Verona Area Needs Network was the only organization to respond to the RFP. And as our board president will tell you, he is currently in negotiations with the county. For us to move into that facility, we need to raise $420,000. We have already raised, with the grant, $187,000. So we have a little ways to go. And in the next six months, we'll be knocking on doors, we'll be making phone calls, we'll be holding fundraisers, we'll be muscling into meetings with you guys, and at the city of Pittsburgh and the town of Verona as well. So on November 6th, we are kicking off the Move the Food campaign, which is to move the food pantry from the basement of the current library, or the old public library, to the administration building out at the Badger Prairie complex. And we hope that all of you will attend that kickoff. And we are also planning additional fundraisers in the very near future at local businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yeah, you can do that after you're done speaking. My name is Mike Sheen. I know Marcia through the community garden down there. And I'm really supportive of what she's been doing for the Van. I kind of picture myself, if I wasn't living in Verona, and I lost my position, my job. Fortunately, I retired. But there's so many people out there that are just hurting. We don't see them, we don't know about them, but they come to get their needs. It's really important that some of these families, and a lot, all these families are taken care of, whether they can do it themselves or with the government. But with the economy that is changing, it's on the upswing, we all know this. But there's still people that are never going to get their jobs back, and they have no hope. They need the help. So if there's any possible way that the committee can go along and help work with Marcia on this fundraiser, I'd appreciate it a lot.
If everyone wants to speak next, can start working their way up if they want.
Hi. I'm Karen Fletcher, and I am the coordinator for the food pantry. And I took this job as a volunteer 11 years ago when I retired from teaching in Verona. I like to make the analogy that when I started with the food pantry, it was like a mom and pop grocery store, very small, we didn't have that many clients, and just everything went very smoothly. Now, we are a supermarket. We have a lot more clients, we're seeing more needy people, senior citizens, quite a few senior citizens from Verona, disabled. But the big thing is a lot of the working poor. Because of that, we do provide toiletries so that they can go to their jobs with clean clothes and deodorant and things like that, just to help them get by and supplement their income, or their grocery bills and that. We also are trying very hard to go healthy. That with all the obesity things that's going, you know, the obesity rates that are going up higher, what happens is the working poor end up buying mac and cheese, all the processed foods, which then turn around and make them obese. So we have really worked hard at the pantry to not have those types of things, to provide fresh fruits and vegetables. So we have the garden that we get vegetables from, and people donate. And then we work with West Middleton Agricultural Station to get a lot of fresh vegetables from them. So we're trying to combat, you know, the obesity issue plus disprovide for these families in every way we possibly can.
Thank you, Karen. We want to thank you for speaking this evening, also for your efforts with Van. I know that you have been an unpaid volunteer, and we've also, the city has worked very closely with you in the past to apply for other grants. So thank
Good evening. I'm Bob Kacheta. Thank you for the support you've shown the Verona Area Needs Network. Along with a lot of people in the room this evening, it's been my honor to serve for the last four years on the Board of Directors of the Verona Area Needs Network, and since early spring as the president of the board. Let me talk to you for a few minutes about two things. One, what we're planning, and the other, the people we serve. Because I think there may be misconceptions about both, and it's a good opportunity to clarify the record. We are in negotiations with the county for 1,200 East Verona Avenue. It's a 7,000 square foot building. It would provide us an opportunity not only to increase the size of our food pantry, to be more commensurate with the needs of the people we serve, but it would also give us an opportunity to broaden the services that we provide. We're talking about transportation services, we're talking about job services, we're talking about some health services. Because one of the things that's so vital about what we're trying to accomplish is to make a difference regarding generational poverty in this community. It's not merely enough to provide somebody with groceries. That's a good start, and at the moment, it may be all we can do, but it's only a start. And so we're looking to the city to help us with this venture. The second thing I wanted to talk with you about is the people we serve. The people we serve in Verona are largely senior citizens. The people who come to us from this community are largely folks who have paid their dues in this community. They are people who are our neighbors. They are us. And the people we serve are people with kids. It should shame us, and perhaps it does, that 25% of the students in the Verona area school district actually qualify for the nutrition program. But shaming us is not enough. Now, I have heard it said that there's something about the fact that a lot of people from Pittsburgh use our pantry. And they do. And I want to assure you that we have gone to the county and received a $100,000 grant. We are here at the city of Verona asking for your continued support, and I appreciate the support we've already received, with a facility that hasn't cost the Verona Area Needs Network anything, so that the vast majority of the money we receive goes for the food. And we won't stop here. We're going to Pittsburgh. We're going to talk to the businesses in Pittsburgh. And I want you to be assured that we are looking to this body for support, just as we'll look to every other potential source of support. But I don't want lost in that, please, the notion that these are people, these are our neighbors. They're just like us. And I don't know what people think about who the folks are who use our food pantry, but I'd encourage everyone on this council to come in and volunteer, meet these people. They're your neighbors. Thank you again for all of your support.
Thank you, Bob. And one other thing that I want to just add, and I could have mentioned when Marcia or Karen was there. And just recently, I had the opportunity to go through it. It was in the basement of the old library. I would be the first one to agree with you that that space is inadequate for the needs that you need to meet right now. So, I for one, when I met with you, Marcia, I told you that, and I'm willing to work with you. So you have, you didn't say it, but I'll say it. You have very inadequate opportunities, you know, to serve the people that you currently need to serve. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? I'm going to ask one other thing. If there's nothing else from Van, we had intended to put a proclamation on the agenda on pancreatic cancer. And I'm going to read the proclamation, and it was an oversight that it didn't get on. But I understand there might be someone here. Do you want to speak to that issue under public comment? Or we can do it under the mayor's comment as well. I just wanted to give you that opportunity. Okay, we'll do it under the mayor's.
Either one.
Okay. Why don't you come, why don't you come up now, as long as you're here? You can both come up if you'd like. While they're doing that, and I do have a resolution to read, and when Alderson Doyle talked to me about this, this is something that has hit some of my wife's relatives and some very good friends of our family. And there's a lot of nasty diseases out there, but dealing with pancreatic cancer is a very difficult one. And it can be extremely, extremely painful for a lot of people. I know individuals that have, that have had that pancreatic cancer and had to deal with a lot of pain. And the one person that I know that was on my wife's side of the family, 11 years, he survived. And that's pretty much unheard of for pancreatic cancer. But go ahead. If you would introduce yourself and then...
My name is Jenny Ani. I live here in Verona. And my mom was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in April of this year. She underwent surgery to have the tumor removed from her pancreas and was given a clear pathology. And then two months later, we found out that it had spread to her liver. And they have recently given her a five to six month prognosis. And like you, you know, like you said, there's nothing really good about pancreatic cancer, and most people don't know about it until you're affected by it. And so we're here tonight just to try to raise awareness, try to get November to clear pancreatic cancer Awareness Month, and just, you know, try to raise money to get research so that this doesn't have to be such a deadly disease. The five-year, and you have all of these statistics in the proclamation, but the five-year survival rate for pancreatic cancer is 6%. 6%. It's pretty humbling. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barb Carlin. I'm from Madison. But I'm here to support Jenny because the advocacy aspect is, is my principal area of responsibility. My husband died of pancreatic cancer in 2000, just under a year following his diagnosis. And there was, there wasn't even an organization or information, really, for the general public at the time. So since the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network formed and has taken root here in the Midwest, it's been something that I've dedicated myself to. And we have, just last night, in the sprinkles and the light rain, approximately 275 people were at a purple light remembrance ceremony outdoors at the state capitol. So with umbrellas and glow sticks and so on. And as an FYI, November 13th, which is a Thursday, will be the first ever World Pancreatic Cancer Day. There's a big movement in the UK and in Europe, and that day has been designated for organizations around the world, encouraging people to wear purple, encourage entire workplaces to wear purple, and there'll be more coming at you in the next couple of weeks. So thank you. And you have the proclamation.
I do. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Anyone else under public comment? If not, we're going to move on. We have one piece of business, and then I'll read the proclamation. We are on approval of minutes from the October 13th meeting, the common council meeting, and then the October 15th special joint meeting that we have with the town of Verona. Those, you've received those minutes with your packet. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and both sets of those minutes have been approved. So I will, next, I will read the proclamation. I have to put my glasses on because there's a lot of things on this one sheet of paper. This is a proclamation declaring the month of November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6%. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally, generally late-stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 800 deaths will occur in Wisconsin in 2014. Whereas, the Recall Centra Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas, it will be very difficult to leverage the opportunities that come out of the scientific framework developed as a result of the Recall Centra Cancer Research Act unless sustained and adequate funding is provided to the National Institutes of Health and National Cancer Institute. And whereas, federal funding for medical research is critical to job protection and creation in Wisconsin. Whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Dane County and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Dane County support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of Verona are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John Holcomer, Mayor of the city of Verona, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Verona, and the proclamation will be signed today, the 27th day of October 2014. So thank you again for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, Liz, for getting it on, for it. We did agree to have it on the agenda, it just didn't get on, but we were able to take care of it under mayor's business. Again, I'm familiar with the disease. It is one of the, one of the areas where we make an annual contribution, my wife and I, and I would encourage others to do the same. So thank you again very much. Next, under mayor's business, we're going to have an update on the Dane County, Dane Com budget proposal and ordinance amendment 56 regarding changes to the Public Safety Communications Center Board. Mr. Burns, if you would, to start out, please.
Yeah, the Dane County Cities and Villages Association held a special membership meeting on October 22nd to discuss both of these items. The first is a proposal in the county executive's budget to include a fix and upgrade to the Dane Com radio system, which has been talked about for some time. It is not yet in fully operation at this point. The proposal is to invest about an additional $4.5 million of capital and approximately $500,000 of additional operating and maintenance costs in order to expand that system at additional tower locations and provide better coverage, providing additional radio coverage into higher-density buildings throughout the county. The other item that was proposed at Dane County was an ordinance amendment, ordinance amendment 56, which would modify the governance structure for the Dane County Center Board that has operational oversight over the 911 center and public safety communications. And under that ordinance amendment, it would make, it would replace the Dane County 911 Center Board with an advisory technical committee, but would no longer have direct operational control over the policies and practices of the 911 center. The membership at the Dane County Cities and Villages Association that was present voted unanimously to support a motion, which I'll read, to support the Dane County 2015 budget provision for the Dane Com fix and upgrade, with no support at this time for the 2014 ordinance amendment 56 regarding the 911 Center Board governance. And Dane County Cities and Villages Association is requesting a joint meeting of all stakeholders regarding the 911 Center Board operations and protocols, also noting that additional money may be needed to reimburse the city of Pittsburgh for its investment regarding Dane Com. The discussion at this point is that Dane County Cities and Villages membership feels that these two items should be considered as separate issues. There is support for continuing to work together on the Dane Com system to improve and enhance that system, and that further discussion should take place regarding the 911 Center Board. From the discussion at the meeting, I think there was an acknowledgement that there could be things to address to improve the, the operation and accountability of the Center Board. But I think there was also concern about making it advisory and not having direct appointments on an operating control board for members from cities and villages and from our public safety services that utilize that system. So at this point, both of those items are pending before Dane County. Dane County Cities and Villages has gone on record. And today, there was an update that went out, which I forwarded on to the council, that goes into some additional detail on this issue. We did want to provide an update and give people an opportunity to ask any questions, provide comments this evening.
Thank you, Bill. I really don't have anything to add. And Liz, you were at the meeting, I want to give you an opportunity, if you, if you want to say anything or not. I guess I would just say that all of us agree that we want to make sure that people in this community, and when I say community, I mean Dane County, are served very well by the radio system and also by the Oversight Board. I think it's important that those dollars are spent wisely. I think it's important that we get all the impacted players in the room and have the conversation. There certainly was a willingness by the people in that room to, to work with others to make sure that we get it, that we get it approved. So, I don't know, Liz, did you have anything?
Sure. I think Bill provided an excellent synopsis, and I just think that the concern that I've heard from some of our public safety officials is just due to Verona's non-emergency dispatch going through the 911 center. We definitely want to make sure that we have some sort of voice, be it if advisory works out to be the best structure for it, or if there's more, a way to, to come to a consensus to get more involvement. I just hope that we can just make sure that public safety is, is the priority at the end of the day, no matter what the outcome.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council members? Mr. Touche?
Elizabeth, do you know why the county wants us out?
Why the county, why, is your question why the county executive wants to move to this advisory structure? I don't have personal knowledge, just in conversations that I've had with different county board supervisors. Their understanding is that there's a frustration with an inability to get quorum at some of the subcommittees. But there was a retort at this Dane County City and Villages Association that, that they crunched the numbers and looked at attendance at different meetings and didn't find that there were issues with quorum. So that was the argument that I heard over and over in conversations with county board supervisors. But from my knowledge and the knowledge presented at this meeting, that was not necessarily the case. So I can't, I can't speak to actual motives or intent, but...
No, thank you. I appreciate the insight.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Bill, for that update. And that would conclude the mayor's business for this evening. So we will move on to the administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. A couple additional updates I'd like to give tonight. First, a joint meeting was held for the Fitch Verona EMS district on October 16th. At that time, there was a discussion of the 2015 operating budget and capital budget for Fitch Verona EMS. The budget, as requested by Fitch Verona, includes the addition of a EMS captain position. That would be a position that would be funded mid-year. And the cost for the total budget, including the captain position for the city of Verona, would result in an increase in the city of Verona share of $38,104. And a large portion of that is due to the, the city of Verona's increase in equalized value, and costs are allocated by a formula looking at equalized value. So as the city of Verona grows relative to the other jurisdictions, our share of the cost increases as well. Other items and discussed at that meeting, including an increase in the, the rates charged for ambulance calls to $900 for residents and $950 for non-residents, as well as adding a mobilization fee to the standby rate of $100 per hour. The city of Verona did not have a quorum present. There was only a quorum present from one of the jurisdictions at the meeting. So as has been the practice in the past, the different jurisdictions would bring these items back before their, their individual governing bodies for action. At that meeting, the city of Verona had indicated that we would be considering these items along with the rest of the city budget, which would be planned to be adopted in the month of November. And the recommended budget, as presented to the finance committee and as recommended by the finance committee earlier this evening, does include the operational changes for Fitch Verona, including the captain Additional update, the, running to report that the city's lawsuit with the IAFF, International Association of Firefighters Union, that the city has reached a settlement agreement. That settlement agreement has been fully executed and approved by both parties. And the city's appeal of the lawsuit that had been pending has now been dismissed. So that settlement agreement is going into effect. And finally, work is progressing on the fire and EMS facility. People have driven by, you've seen a lot of activity on the site, and masonry wall's starting to go up. We are at a point right now where we are in need of steel, and we've had some difficulties in getting the steel delivery. Certainly a part of that is the high amount of construction going on in Dane County. At this point, my understanding is that we're at least a couple weeks behind where we had hoped to be at this point. There is a meeting taking place tomorrow with the steel subcontractor and their contractor to look at the timeline and what we can do to get the steel in place. Our goal is to continue moving that project forward and try to get the building as enclosed as possible, as soon as possible, in order to avoid any potential additional costs as we go into the winter. Also, pay requests, number two, for the, the construction portion of the facility have been processed and are included in the bills for payment, which were reviewed by the finance committee this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns this evening? Not seeing any, Bill. Thank you. Next, we will move to the engineer's report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. For...
Four construction projects this evening to discuss. Uh, the first is Cathedral Point Phase Four. Uh, the south portion of Cathedral Point, uh, has an asphalt binder course in place, and eighty-five percent of the sidewalk has been finished. Uh, gas main is currently being installed, and, uh, street terrace restoration will be completed, uh, soon as weather permits. Uh, the only other item left is a connecting sanitary sewer through the Purple Cow property, uh, still needs to be completed. It's anticipated that all work will be completed by November twenty-first. Locust Drive Phase Two, sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer have been completed. Crushed aggrad base course is being installed this week, with the curb and gutter hopefully installed by the end of the week. Finished street grading and asphalt binder course will follow next week with, uh, street terrace restoration to follow that. Street should be open to traffic by the end of November. Prairie Oaks Phase Three, uh, the remaining item there was sidewalks, and those are being installed this week, followed by the street terrace restoration, and that'll complete, uh, this development. And finally, Liberty Business Park Phase Two, sanitary sewer and water main have been completed. Contractor is working on the storm sewer. Arrival of the box culvert to complete the storm sewer construction has been delayed because the manufacturer is short of steel. Again, a lot of construction in the state and steel shortages. Uh, contractor will complete as much as Clarity Street and Laser Street as possible, but weather conditions may become an issue as we move into November. Uh, contractor still needs, excuse me, three to four weeks of good weather to get the asphalt binder course installed. That completes my report this evening. If there is questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock this evening? I don't see any. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
We will then move on to Committee Reports. We'll begin with the Finance Committee. Mr. McIlvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item nine-A-one, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of one million four hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you. In the way of explanation, a couple, or three of the items from this month's bills, uh, first being to G.H. Findor for labor on the concrete contract for fire and EMS. Uh, second being to the Madison Metro Sewage District, uh, two hundred and four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. And finally, to Scott Construction for our asphalt resurfacing for this year, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ten cents.
You've heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Does anyone have any question for staff or for the Finance Committee? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling one million four hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred thirty dollars and forty cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, under item nine-A-two, uh, it was the intent, or it was the motion by the Finance Committee that, uh, the resolution R dash one-four dash zero-four-eight, supporting the Verona Area Needs Network, be postponed indefinitely. However, as the mayor alluded to earlier, uh, in comments before the meeting, uh, it is the, uh, or it was the intent of the Finance Committee that forty thousand dollars be put into the two thousand fifteen budget, uh, that would go towards the Verona Area Needs Network. And I did have the opportunity to, uh, speak with Mrs. Kisheta after the Finance Committee meeting. I, I think it's also the intent of the city, as well as the Finance Committee, that ongoing discussions, uh, continue as it relates to operational costs, as we have a better understanding of what happens with, uh, the building that you intend to move into. So, I, I think, um, moving forward, uh, it is my sense, at least from the people who were at that meeting tonight, that, uh, the council will continue to support the Vann in its, in its effort and its mission in the city and the area.
So, Mr...
So, it, given, with that lengthy explanation, I will make a motion to postpone indefinitely resolution R dash one-four dash zero-four-eight, supporting the Verona Area Needs Network.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery to postpone indefinitely. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle, you had a question? Comment?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment and thank Alder Linder for poring over the budget and finding a way to, uh, increase the donation to Vann from twenty thousand to forty thousand, and just appreciate his diligence in number crunching. It was much appreciated by the committee, and I think the council as a whole, from what I've heard.
Thank you. Mr., yours?
I don't sit on the Finance Committee, but, excuse me, but I wanna thank the Finance Committee. Um, there was some talk about the Needs Network and, and Fitchburg's contribution, and I'm happy to say that Verona is not letting Fitchburg's unwillingness stand in the way of our willingness. Um, and, you know, I, I hope that we're setting a good example for Fitchburg and that Verona doesn't have to shoulder this alone, so I wanna thank the committee's work.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Ricky?
Uh, just wondering if, instead of postponing indefinitely, if perhaps there could be a, a date to revisit the issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McIlvery?
And, and I know the, the notion of an indefinite postponement sounds ominous, but I think the intent more is to address the need, the immediate need, which it sounds like you do have for construction or build-out, and once they actually find themselves in a building, I think that, at that time, at least in talking to Mrs. Kisheta this evening, it would be her intent to come back to the city and talk about, uh, the operational costs moving forward. And I, I think she had mentioned she thought that might happen around June.
I'm just calling to... The President is here.
Mr. Kisheta could certainly address it then.
Yeah. Mrs. Kisheta and I, uh, we met last week and had a very good meeting, and, and Marsha was very clear that she was not necessarily officially representing, but did a very good job, and I told her she was very good at convincing. And, uh, I told her that evening that it would be in our intent that if we took action, it would replace the resolution, and there could be ongoing discussions, and we intend to have those ongoing discussions.
If I might add one more thing, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and, and certainly my intent would be to find a way to do exactly as Mr. Yours mentioned, to, to build a relationship with Fitchburg so that, uh, we can carry this forward in a much stronger and more strategic plan than, than it is if we just carry it alone. I, I, I think Fitchburg will find a way to get there.
Seeing no other questions, the motion is to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. McIlvery, is there anything else from Finance Committee?
Um, the only thing I would mention is that, uh, I believe we'll be publishing the recommended budget. Uh, Bill, if you'd like to address that here in just a minute, but, uh, moving forward, I wanna thank, uh, the staff, and I mean all the staff, that, uh, put work into the budget as usual. Um, I think the staff did a great job. I wanna thank the people who sit on the committee with me, uh, to help us work through the budget. There's a lot of time that goes into it. And lastly, I wanna thank, uh, the other members of, uh, the council that came to the committee meeting, because it is a lot of time to go through this stuff, and they all have their own, uh, other committees to, to chair and to work on, so it was good to see them there and, and, uh, partake, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Yours, please.
Um, before that, I, I didn't know if, um, Mr. Burns wanted to make a comment on the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Thank you, Dale.
Uh, sure, yeah, I, uh, I was thinking of making something at our announcement, but I can certainly do it now as we're talking with, with Finance Committee. Uh, as Mr. McIlvery had indicated, uh, this evening, the Finance Committee, uh, did take action to, uh, recommend, uh, the budget, as well as the direct staff to proceed with publishing the public hearing notice. Uh, the timeline that we're looking at at this point is that that public hearing notice, uh, would be going to the newspaper on November the third. Uh, we would then plan on doing a presentation, um, of the recommended budget and items included in the budget, uh, on November tenth, and likely what we'd be looking at is something similar to last year, where we might perhaps try to schedule a committee of the whole meeting prior to the council meeting, uh, to do the budget presentation. Uh, then we'd be looking at the following week, uh, the seventeenth of November, to do an additional committee of the whole meeting for a working session, uh, discussion on the budget, with then the targeted, uh, date for adoption of the budget and the levy on the following Monday, which would be the twenty-fourth of November. Uh, we also had a discussion at the committee level about, uh, the potential process for amendments to the budget, and what we were recommending, uh, staff to the Finance Committee, and I believe the, the committee was supportive of, was using, um, a similar process to last year, um, using a budget amendment form, um, as we did last year, uh, that people could use for identifying amendments that they would like to make. Uh, one item that, as staff, we would strongly recommend is that, uh, we try to avoid a situation where we have amendments being voted on the night of the adoption of the budget. Potentially, if there are amendments that are affecting multiple areas of the budget, it can be very difficult to get accurate numbers pulled together to finalize the budget and the levy if there are still pieces in play. Uh, so, I'll be sending out some information on the suggested timeline, but I, I think our goal would be, uh, that we get information on the budget out, uh, we have the opportunity that if people want to submit amendments, that they are submitted, um, prior to the committee of the whole working session on the seventeenth, and that evening, there could be discussion as well as potential action on amendments, so that coming out of that meeting on the seventeenth, uh, we have an understanding of what the final budget would be, and we can get that prepared for the twenty-fourth. Again, I'll, I'll send out an email to the council with some additional information on the process, but, uh, that was one of the items that we discussed with the timeline.
Thank you, Bill. Go ahead, Dale.
Thank you. Uh, public, public, um, public works, it's right there, there's a typo. Public safety, uh, I was only bringing one thing to the council tonight, and I'd like to make, uh, a motion to approve ordinance fourteen dash eight-five-one, amending section thirteen of chapter one of title ten of the City of Verona Code of Ordinances, Motor Vehicles, and Traffic.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. This ordinance approves the addition of east-west and north-south stop signs at Cathedral Point, scenic ridge, and Prairie Oak subdivisions. The ordinance also makes a correction to the name of Pinehurst Court to Pinehurst Drive. Um, the committee met earlier this evening, uh, voted unanimously.
Thank you. Any questions for the committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve resolu-, excuse me, ordinance number fourteen dash eight-five-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Is there anything else from Public Safety and Welfare?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have discussion under old business, discussion and possible action regarding negotiating strategy for boundary agreement discussions with the City of Madison and the town of Verona. I would accept the motion to go into closed session. Do we have, Mr. Yours?
I'll make a motion, uh, to go into closed session as directed by city council. Staff have begun preliminary discussions. Am I reading the wrong thing? Yep, I'm reading the wrong thing on the, every time. Um, the city, the city council may convene in closed session as authorized by section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, "For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session."
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIlvery. Uh, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle.
Aye.
Alderperson Linder.
Aye.
Alderperson McIlvery.
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky.
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner.
Aye.
Alderperson Touche.
Yes.
And Alderperson Yours.
Aye.
And that roll call vote is unanimous. We are now in closed session.